Okay. I will call the meeting to order at 6:30. It's great to see all of you after hiatus. I want to welcome Beth to her first board meeting. She's been here since July 1st and very busy. And welcome Brian, also to his first board meeting. Brian and Beth are forming a great team that are going to do a good job of leading our district forward. I don't see any members of the public, so I will ask that we add one agenda item. We need an executive session to receive confidential information from legal counsel regarding transportation. That information does not affect the decision that we're going to be asked to make earlier in the meeting. So I'll just, it will be following our negotiations executive session or before. It'll be both things in the executive session.
You need a motion?
I don't need a motion, I can just add. Okay, so let's move on to the consent agenda. We actually don't have any recommendations for professional appointments. So the only thing we have is the meeting minutes. So let's just make a motion on the meeting minutes.
I'll move that we approve the school board meeting minutes for June 20th, 2017.
Thanks, Marla. Any discussion, changes, corrections? Okay. I'll put some favors, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Okay, Kim, I think we're at six. Yep, okay, great. So we'll move right into the presentation, which tonight is going to be Beth's entry plan and what she's been doing in the month of July.
Yeah, so at the board retreat, I will give you real, I'll spell out the goals for you and we'll look at real detail of the entry plan. But this is the first 30 days since the beginning. And I will, as I talk through it, I will add, this is part of my entry plan. So you'll see pieces and evidence of part of the entry plan, but Brian and I will walk you through. It is, it is our 30 day, well, it's, he's been here longer, but, since July 1st. So we've spent a lot of time to listening, learning, and adjusting, and figuring out teams, which we'll, I'll talk about. And at the end of, so an entry plan is 100 days for a superintendent, or whatever. You try to get the gist of the system and do a lot of the listening and learning as you go through. Hopefully, to come out of it to be able to analyze, stabilize, prioritize, and mobilize. But we've been doing this throughout anyways, as we learn something new. And I say "we," we've been in a lot of meetings together. And when Brian's meeting with someone, or I'm meeting, then we kind of come back together to try to get a big picture of the whole system and discussing that. Do you want to say anything else?
Well, you know, the team, it's not just us getting acquainted to the team, but it's a new team. It's a team that's including people that haven't worked together before. So, you know, that process is also modeling what we want to try to have as far as cooperation and collaboration, and what type of relationships we need in order for that, you know, in the long term to meet some of our short-term needs.
So, I've set the focus as relationships. It's really important as we come together as one system, that relationships we focus on. I've been talking about that with both of the, of the whole district office, at both of the offices, and also with the principals. That it's really important that we spend the time relationship across the whole district. We will have early release days where third grade teachers can get together, fifth grade, job alikes. And it's built on relationships. And those relationships that are built then will move a system forward if we spend the time getting to know one another and building those relationships. So at all levels, I even think about it with kids too, across the district, that we need to build those relationships. So one of the first things we did to start those relationships, we brought the, I brought the whole leadership team, which was the principals, the curriculum, director of learning, digital learning, the co-ed, special ed directors, so all the district office admin, and Brian and myself, to the Learning Center at Fleming, at Fleming, at Fleming. Which is a little different, they've usually met here or at the Park and Rec. Really want to get a sense of all the buildings and get into them so that they're learning about each other and building relationships with each other in their own settings, so they get to know the whole district. So we started out, I just put it out to the principals, who wants to host our first one? And Dan Ryan did, and we were at Fleming, which is a beautiful center, it's beautiful, the Learning Center. So that was on July 17th. The first thing that we did to start to build those relationships is, we did a activity, north, south, east, west. It's a compass point, and you find that, it's kind of like one of those personality tests, or work personalities. And then we divided into groups. This is the east group, as Brian is part of. And they had to discuss what an east personality is, who they are as that person, and then figure out what other compass points are challenging for them, and what compass points they can use to build in a team. Yeah.
Yeah, this was, this was, there were two things that were kind of amazing about the process. It was reported by one of the principals that one of their key fears was that the team was going to be big.
Yes.
And, and actually, by the way of having it at Fleming, having it in the Learning Center with round tables, there was a real intimacy for the team, which really opened up the chance to have a relationship. And that this with the first activity gave people, I had never worked with Wendy before and others, but it gave us that shared vocabulary, something to have fun with, and also something to kind of get to know each other with. So it had a real kind of elixir process to it. It kind of moved relationships pretty fast in that morning.
It did, and this week I'm at Killington with a lot of the principals and assistant principals. And one said to me today, "Oh, somebody asked me for water," and I like reacted really late or something. And she stood up and handed the water, and she said, "That's because I'm south. You were north, you wanted to get it there, but you were onto something else." And it was like exactly what my brain was doing. And we just, it's perfect. So, and this is the Southerners, who are very kind, try to look out for everybody. And we all have a piece of these compass points within us, but it's just when we use them and how we try. I need more south. I do care about people. But it's like, I have a goal and I go for it. So I do need to surround myself with people that like remember to take breaks, remember that to bring the food. That's not, I can't do that. Or I do, but strengthen that skill. So this was a great learning opportunity. And I do have to say that all the principals were really excited even to be moving around in small groups. We did whole group, small group. We laughed a lot.
Yeah.
It was great. And then in the afternoon of this day, Brian and I met with just the principals. So it was at 10:00, and we started to talk about what supports can we give to you as a whole group? We have meetings individually with each one, but we really wanted to know, what's, what do you need as a group? What do you want? What do you want from meetings? And I consider them a learning group, so, and they, I think, understood that from me, that we will be doing some learning together, and what does that look like? So we set up a schedule, meeting their needs, not district office needs, but their needs, and around their day. And we're going to rotate those meetings through the schools too, which they're really excited about. So we meet four times a month, it's like weekly, but one will focus on instruction. The second one, they'll get into grade level span, so they can really hone in on whatever we do in the instructional meeting, that they can go and think about their own schools and like schools. And then the third meeting will be a week, a month, will be more about the, being a manager of a school. Principals have two jobs, their instructional leadership and then also being that manager. And that's when we'll bring in some of the operations stuff, budget, or anything with healthcare, or whatever they need to know on that side of it. So it'll keep the meetings very focused. And then the fourth meeting, I'm not sure how this is going to go, but they want it flexible. So we'll see what that flexible is as we go through the year, but.
It was a great opportunity to have, right at the beginning, this kind of new relationship of Beth and I working together to support the principals and be able to spend some time just with the principals to kind of clarify that role, what it might look like, what parts of it are familiar, but what parts of it we have aspirations to be different, so.
Yeah. So then, July 20th, we came here to the library, and we started exploring our values to create a vision and to go towards one goal. One way to do that is to start with your own values. So they worked independently, creating some values on sticky notes. Then they got together within a partner, and the job with a partner was really to dig down into those values. And then they found common values. So then the large group went into two groups, and I think there might have been 28 people. So they divided into two groups. And here's one of the groups behind the screen, finding common values. And then the other group was working on the other side. And it was very interesting because they came up with two different lists, well, two lists, but very similar on their values. So it would be, will be quite easy to put the values together as common values. And I was facilitating and going back and forth, listening to them, and they'd be on the same exact value and trying to figure out like the meaning of it. It was really interesting. There's many times that I wanted to stop and say, "Listen, you're doing the same thing." It was very exciting. We played music and danced.
The exploration of values was a huge element, again, to cross, mix, and mash us together to talk about something that's pretty internal to you, share that in a really kind of vulnerable way, but then work as a group to kind of come to a consensus. It was a real nice activity.
Yeah, and to have those values focused around kids. So our core values, what does that mean when then we look at a district? So, and it has to do with a lot of the work that Voices for Education is doing too, with the values and forwards. So we did go outside for a picture, but they did stand around a while. I told them we needed a brain break. And so we, they were able to just chit chat and have some fun. We came back inside in the afternoon after a nice lunch. We worked as a whole group answering questions. There were a lot of questions about roles and responsibilities at the district office, like whose role has changed? What's their job now? What's coming out of HR? Who's ahead of HR? All those questions. So they were able to, each district office administrator explained their role and clarified that with the principals. And, and they had great questions. It was a really nice session. Of course, they know what a superintendent does. So I was rather quiet, but listening. And it was a great, it was a good, good afternoon. And it flew by, that whole, those days just went by really fast. So then we are also looking at the district office and the organizational structure. And so, at the east office, now it's called, it kind of started informally calling it the east, and then it just stuck. So the east office has the, is the instructional office, where my office is, and special ed, curriculum, and digital learning. I can't wait to get the whole team there. Right now, there's, some are moved in, and some are still, so we're getting there. It's getting exciting. But it's very, before the move, it seemed very low-key, like a, I don't know, it was different. Now that people are moving in, the energy is up, everybody's more excited, welcoming people. It's just, it was really exciting, because I kept thinking, okay, I got to build this culture and climate here, because it was pretty low, until the actual move started happening. So it's been exciting.
I can attest, there was a lot of activity there today.
Yeah, oh, good.
Yeah. Chaos could be one of the ways to define it. We have the phone system going in, there's people that are moving, there's files are being reorganized, and there's some offices being painted, and meanwhile, it's just like, whoa, I'm going west.
Brian and I share an office at this space. It's my main office, and Brian, it's very often I can walk in the morning and he's sitting at my table, which is nice. And then we have the west office, which is the operations one, where mainly Brian is for the most of his time, and then I also plot myself in there. The other day I greeted him there. HR, legal, and finance are at this office. So now our challenges are to build one team serving students from two different offices, which you all knew that that would be a challenge. But we did have a lunch where we brought everybody together, and they, we were fed here on the campus with the rink, and we sat outside at a really long table. It was like a big, huge Thanksgiving dinner. But it was really nice to be able to, Brian spoke and thanked the staff and the support that they've given each other through the move. And it's been challenging, but I think that they really appreciated that we took some time to do that. We felt like we were spending all this time with principals and admin, and it was like, wait a minute, we have all these other people working, and let's try to bring, so we do want to do that more often. And trying to figure out, so what celebrations did each office have? What traditions do you carry over into the new? Because those things are really important to develop culture and climate and keep those relationships and build new ones. Yes.
Where does communications fit? Over in east or at west?
So that's been a good question. He, communications PR, Ben Dickey, will actually be in instructional. And my feeling was that, for one, to pull him away from his other space, because people were relying still on him being the admin assistant to the superintendent, and to get him more involved in that curriculum and instruction and out in the schools, and in the instructional building, he'll be able to hear what's going on more. We'll invite him to many meetings, and he can, he and I can communicate about what's happening.
So you had enough offices up there?
Well, we have a couple people sharing. I actually, we wanted to find a space, well, he and I are sharing. That's one of the reasons why we decided we could share, because we knew people would have to share. So why not? We'll, we'll do it. And I brought the district office, the instructional team. So it was Ellen and Amy and Erin and Dylan and myself sat down. And I said, okay, so we were thinking about support staff too, and their roles. So I brought them in a room, and I'm like, okay, this is how many people we have, let's discuss what they do. And then we need some off, how are we going to work it so that everybody will be comfortable? So there are a couple people sharing. Yeah. Which the offices there, they're big enough that, where the people are sharing, they seem plenty big enough. It's different though.
Here on the, at the west office, HR has moved to the front of the building on the first floor, so that they're really accessible as people are coming there. And then finance is going to be in the same location, but first and second floor. And then Deb is in Judy's old office, I'm in the old conference room. And then we'll have a new conference room eventually as Paul switches offices, so. We're expecting a little less foot traffic down at the west that we had because of the constant meetings for curriculum and instruction, special ed. So that will, that was one of the reasons, it's much better parking situation up at the east office, and thought that that would be a better accommodation for visitors and people coming to see up there. We tried to, you know, we leveraged existing facilities. We looked at facilities, you know, ideally, I think both of us have a preference to have the entire team together, that there's a, that there's a synergy and an opportunity that happens with that. But recognize that this is the beginning, and that we need to kind of get oriented and settled. And we really tried to do this in a basis of very little budgetary resources and utilize what we have so that there are additional costs to the district, with the idea of, let's get the short term settled, and let's really start to work in our vision, and how do we see this happening in three years? What does it look like?
Don't get too comfortable in your space.
Yeah.
Well, and presumably, as we're unifying the sheer numbers, maybe different three years out than they are today.
That's right. That's right, and that is always on my mind, thinking about that. And so to even have the ideal space, we don't even know what, what we need. Yeah, so yes, that will take, right, right. So the whole point in trying to keep these two offices as a team and feeling like we're all working together. So we'll continue to think of things we can do together as a whole team. So, this is my dinner table, because I keep saying, I don't know what team. Like when I go to have a team meeting, or somebody will say, "Well, we going to meet?" And I'm like, "Well, who's coming to the meeting?"
Who's, who's we?
Who's coming to the meeting? Because they were very used to what they had and the days they met and all of that. So I just started to jokingly say, "Well, I, I need to know who's coming to dinner before I prepare a meal." So to put an agenda together, and is there a purpose of these teams? So we did work with what was known as the transitional team. Is that what we decided they were called?
Yeah, transitional cabinet was a term.
A transitional cabinet, yes. So we have met with them, and that's the Amy and Erin and Ellen and Dylan and Paul.
Deb and Vince.
And Deb, and Vince, and Brian, and myself. So we have been doing some teaming on that sense, and being very sensitive to, I don't like to go to a meeting that there's no purpose and just to meet. So that's the, my keep thinking about, okay, so the dining room table, we're going to have a purposeful meal. How many are going to be at the table? And should they all be there, or what? So we're still working through that. That's, that's taken us a long time. We look at each other sometimes like, so what's this meeting?
Well, and I think one of the things that we've realized is coming into the organization from the outside and really immersing ourselves into it, is that the last 18 months doesn't necessarily resemble what the last 18 years looks like.
Right.
But it has built habit, and it has built understanding, at least by those that are in it. And so coming in, it's like, really? You know, it's more of that sense. So there's been, there's been just some pondering of like, that's interesting that we have, it's that group, and what is the purpose of that group? So we've been kind of working through it, and, and some of it has been a matter of kind of reorganizing some of those groups and better understanding that, you know, we have this position that is focusing on the operations. We have a position that's focusing on the lead instruction, and how does the house kind of get organized with that new definition put into it.
And a lot of things that was coming, right off, everybody was like, well, who's making decisions? How are decisions going to be made? And so I started to think about, how can we look at a new system, even though it's an old system, but the new system in a different kind of lens? So I've learned and experienced this reorganization, and there's four different lenses that you can look at, a system or a problem. We took one and really dove into it, but it's the human, to look at something in a human resource, like who is it going to affect when you have this new hire, or whatever it is? Even to look at our opening in-service day on August 28th, to think about the human resource side of it. Who is it going to affect? What are the needs? And then the symbolic, what's symbolic about this new opening day? And then the structural end of it, that's where we got into a lot of the teams and what they are, what they look like, when are they going to meet? It's all of that structure to a system that are so important. And then that whole political thing, if you do this, what are the ramifications? Or who's going to be watching, or who's that going to affect? So we spent an eight-hour day on these and getting to know them, and then taking some incidences like, so let's look at this, and what's the lens, and went through each of them. It was, it was pretty good work. And they do, I use these frames a lot, and it's been helpful to have some other people on that same page and thinking about it. Brian and I will think about different issues and bring these into it. And the symbolic right now is really huge with a new district, and keeping the symbolic aspects from the old, and how do you transition them to new? And even keep the individual schools, you know, they have, they have their personalities too, so. For community relationships, I've been, I met with Voices for Education. I was inducted into Rotary in June, so I've been two meetings on my own, on solo, so that's been good. I'm on a new committee called, I mean, I'm on a committee called Youth. Figured that was pretty appropriate. And that's been a great way for me to get to know people. I get, I, I knew that Rotary would be important, but I didn't realize like how important it really is to do that. So that, that's been great. And then meeting people as they come into the instructional office, I'll meet families and things. So I do need to get out in the community more, but that is a goal. And I would like to work with the Voices of Edu, for education to do that too. We've talked about, I've done coffee hours in neighborhood like cafes and things before, and they were very willing to help with that, and what would that look like? So that would be nice to have kind of that assistance with that, but.
And that certainly, I, I think that there could be some real value to the, to the district to have that also happening on the operational side, not just in the community safety meetings that we have, that we're fortunate to have all the first responders and that great partnership, but in other places where people have that access to talk about the school finances, or talk about operational policy and so forth. So there's an interest also to have both of us out in the community and be present and have a presence. And it, you know, the job in the past can sometimes become really contained in front of Excel spreadsheets. And you kind of, people miss you, and you miss people in that kind of equation. And that can become a disconnect.
Easy to have that happen, Martha.
Question on community relationships. The trustees in the junction, select board in the town, Westford's select board. Is there talk about going and introducing yourself to them? Because these communities are always, you'll find people will go complain to their select board or their trustee if they're unhappy.
Yeah, so that is on my detail of my entry plan. All of these are part of my entry plan, but that's in the more detail that I'll share with you at the retreat. I just haven't, don't have a date set to do that. It's, you know, trying to prioritize who, what I need to do to get school started.
Right.
Well, and that brings us to.
Oh, there you go. So yes, we're, so doing all this and getting ready to learn and have everybody ready to do that. So we have, August 28th is the opening in-service. We haven't thought of the name yet, trying to move away from convocation into another name, but that's out. Some people are thinking about that. But we are going to utilize the rink. It'll look a lot different. We want it to be more like a conference, so it'll be set up like graduation, but round tables. So people will be sitting at a round table together, building relationships, which is the whole point in that day. And we'll do a lot of things where people are getting up, walking around, and introducing themselves. I'm, as I told you, I'm in Killington this week with administrators. In the speaker, this keynote was on relationships today. I'm like, oh my goodness, here we go. So I was taking lots of notes and things that we can do, and have some good ideas from him on how to do that, but.
And I think, you know, when we first came into the district, and Beth's decision to focus on relationships, move us through and facilitate the compass points, facilitate a conversation around values, you know, that's, that's long-term. You know, that, that is, that's slowing down so we can speed up kind of concept. But we're also really recognizing that it's the 1st of August now, and the kids are coming, and we're going to have to, we're going to become a bit consumed by the pragmatic and the drive and the task-driven stuff. And it will be a test for us to continue to remind people that we're, we're not stepping over, but we may need to reprioritize some of that, some of that longer-term vision. But that, that's going to be the key to building a brand-new organization that has a strong foundation, is to not get, and I think those were the challenges that we found when we first came in. You know, it was that, okay, we've been talking for eight months about a central office move, what's the decision? And it was like, I haven't been part of those eight months of conversation. You know, but there was, people were, they were already at the edge, and they needed that sort of task-driven and urgencies to be addressed.
Yes, it was like a magic wand was going to come through on July 1st, and everything was going to be complete. But it has been interesting. And they've been, it's been great, awesome energy in the SCU, very, very, I mean, in the district, and very welcoming. I already feel a huge part of the leadership team, which is, I mean, usually you spend a long time building those relationships. But I think that they're excited to move forward too, when they feel like it's new, and the relationship building already that we've done in that week. We have a couple more days in August with them that we're, we'll plan out together. But it's, it's been a great week, but there, I mean, a great month, but there are challenges that we've run into. Transportation being one of them. I mean, there's things that, you know, I mean, there's things that, you know, you just get every day, there's something that's coming your way. But try to keep it, um, I think both of us have that positive energy, um, that reflects. So when we do get bombarded with something, we're able to handle it. But, um, yeah, it's been, it's been great to have Brian too to bounce ideas off of or whatever. So I think our team formed pretty quickly. I think that was different for the leadership team to figure out, who are these two people coming off this way? But, um, it was good.
Questions, comments?
Here we are, being crazy.
I'm getting, I'm getting near my microphone. From my observations, you're off to a great start. We've, Beth and Brian and Kim and I have started to plan the board retreat and you will find that there will be some similarities in what the board does at their retreat to what Beth and Brian have been doing with their leadership teams. And I think that will be good to have that parallel, all kinds of activities going on from different perspectives. So any other, anything else? Well, great, thanks for, thanks for that update and it helps us understand what you've been doing and where things are at. So Beth just mentioned transportation. You all received a memo from Brian yesterday. And as you know from the memo, there are some challenges. Am I turning it over to you, Brian?
Yep.
Okay, take it away.
That'd be great. So I have, um, I have a slide deck that's gonna give some of the background information, kind of bring us up, answer some of what I can imagine is, um, you know, questions that might be on the mind of both the board and of the public. And tried to set this up so that the slide deck and with some improvements can continue to live and be on our website and so forth. So I wanted to just sort of set off the idea of what was the direction that was previously set. And it was to continue to provide all transportation services that existed in the legacy districts, but also add high school transportation in Westford and add K-12 transportation in Essex Junction. So that had been a direction set, I think, coming even out of the red study and certainly one that was furthered by this board as it, it, as it kind of began to gel and exist. So with that, we solicited and retain a transportation contractor for Essex Junction. Currently E S D, E W S D has multiple contractors and multiple contracts. And that's just a series of us transitioning, transforming. And then we wanted to design and vet new routes in Essex Junction and the Westford Transportation and work with principals and community safety personnel to make sure that we had the best pedestrian safety and traffic, traffic flow at and around our Essex Junction schools. So where we find ourselves now in Westford is that we've confirmed that the high school transportation can be done in two routes and we're kind of vetting that now. I spoke with the principal today and went back, we're working with the contractor. That is a much smaller contractor that has served Westford and has served Westford very well for a number of years. They're very familiar with the community and the roads and what the roads look like in October versus April and so forth. So they're working through that. They report that they have the drivers necessary to handle the two additional routes. And the principal and contractor are working closely now with some communication strategies and they wanna reach out particularly to these new routes and find out what the dri- ridership intention is. And just, if somebody never plans on it, then it can make a route more efficient. So that's what's happening in Westford, seems to be going well. The budgeted resources are there, uh, per the approved FY18 budget. In Essex Junction, we've made some improvements. They've happened or are happening at Albert D. Lawton in Hiawatha. These are long-term pedestrian safety and traffic flow improvements, but we're also looking at the longer-term improvements that are needed at Summit Street School and at Fleming. So we've, we've addressed the ones that have the ability to be addressed and those are really long-term improvements for those facilities. We have buses regularly going to these schools. The idea of adding K-12 transportation to Essex Junction is not the first introduction of buses into the junction, field trips, um, parks and rec, all those various elements. So we're improving a long-term matter in those cases and trying to research what the, the better approach is for Summit Street and Fleming. We've confirmed the number of routes necessary in EJ would be eleven. And that we've undergone three months of recruitment. And unfortunately, those three months of driver recruitment for those eleven positions has yielded one licensed driver and two inquiries that are working their way through a DMV check, criminal background check, a drug test and CDL training, CDL certification, and then our own training and requirements that happen with our mandatory requirements, training requirements. So those two are working their way through the system now. And, you know, it is, it is the feeling of where we are, understanding that it takes four to six weeks for somebody to come into the system in order to be able to drive, that we are out of time with regards to recruiting to be ready for first day of school. Any questions regarding time horizon, what that means, four to six weeks? Why does it take that long?
Any questions, but not about that specifically.
Okay. So, you know, based upon that, there is a recommendation that we're asking the board to consider this evening and that is that the planned expansion of regular to and from school busing in Essex Junction be postponed until the 2018-19 school year. So there's a question out there, well, wait a minute, we have a bus driver, maybe we have three. Is there a way to do a partial or phased solution? And there are additional things that we could look under. We have looked under a number of rocks, mostly the rocks of like, how can we induce recruitment? We've asked our contractor to increase starting pay. We've asked them to increase signing bonuses. We've asked them to institute a recruitment bonus. We have, um, they pay for all the CDL, which is about three to four thousand dollars a cost. They pay the person to, all those costs for the person. So they've gone in, we haven't gone to every extent possible, but honestly, what we're looking at is that we didn't get to the number where we felt that we had a partial or phased option. You know, with one, maybe two or three, I would think that we would be looking much more at five or six. We could have started to consider partial options. And part of it is that with just so few, it would be really hard to standardize that criteria. You know, whether it would be by street. But then we run into some issues in which Essex Junction doesn't currently have or built in a time-sensitive start of day and end of day for the purposes of transportation. Essex Town has had it this way because it's been transporting for all its existence nearly. So when you start to look at some of this criteria, you're needing to be two or three places at the same time. And that's why the numbers of just one or two or three buses begin to really get challenged. Other districts could be explored to determine if they could expand. However, this driver shortage is a widespread challenge. I mean, we know that other, other districts, including those districts that operate their own in-house transportation, which is often looked at as the sole answer. If you can provide somebody full-time work with benefits, then you've got the best recruitment option. But attrition is still a real issue at those as well. Because a school bus driver with a CDL is also somebody that can quickly go into Casella, can quickly go into other places where, um, the starting wages are just higher than what we're willing to pay for per bus run. So what happened with the recruitment effort? I think it boiled down, this is the efforts that went under. I, I don't believe that our vendor shortchanged us. I, I do, I think some look at it as that they started too late, maybe they didn't do enough. I think if I didn't have a good feel that this is a widespread issue, not only in Vermont, but it's a widespread issue across the country and that it's not brand-new. That, that managing absences, managing vacancies has been really ramping up into almost a crisis situation in other districts, even our own district at times with trying to manage vacancies. It is not unusual, in fact, I think it is usual, that the owners of the Westford Bus Company that, that services the bus, uh, busing there, uh, run their own routes.
Take Schreick's pair routes.
Yeah, um, just, cause if you, you, you need to get the routes out, it, it has to happen. So, but it has only yielded this. If you saw the CAX piece that was Brian Hemingway, he is, we refer to him as Mountain Transit. He's actually part of Student Transportation of America, which is a multi-state, uh, transportation company. Mountain Transit has well over a hundred and fifty different routes that they run throughout Vermont. And he mentioned in that piece that he could today hire, um, up to a hundred people for bus driving. Twenty, twenty-five in, in Middlebury, another twenty out of his, um, Milton headquarters. He needs eleven for us and then over into, uh, the Dartmouth area and so forth, so.
Were there efforts to reach out to like the unemployment department of the Vermont Labor Department or to politicians who claim that jobs for Vermont is what they're all about?
I, I think that there's certainly, we did a fairly good job, uh, they did a fairly good job and we certainly helped them. We helped them with access to like the Essex United Soccer Tournament and they did a couple of thousand flyers during that tournament. Really figuring that the people in and around this direct community are the best people for us to try to get. They know it, they might have the inclination. What's hard and it's happening at the Department of Labor and others is that this is a four-hour job at even, even eighteen bucks an hour for five days a week, but not five days a week in perpetuity because all school vacations are off. It's really hard. It's an, it's an interruption in job searching. It's, it's been really hard and they're, so they're having a tough time even placing people, the, you know, Department of Labor, having this be a job because it's not a sustainable wage. There are ways to look at having it in-house, we can talk about that later, but this is almost a supply and demand for what school districts are willing to pay on a per-bus basis. There's a certain wage that there, that, that then becomes available, that the bus contractor can pay. And then there's just not a supply of people that want a four-hour-a-day job, two in the morning, two in the afternoon.
Well, the reality is with four hours a day, from past knowledge of working with people that work part-time, you get to a certain level, they lose their, um, for instance, single girls I've have, they'd lose, they'd earn over a certain point, they'd lose their help towards schooling, they'd lose their help towards daycare, they would lose their Medicaid for, um, insurance. So when you talk four hours a day, it's, it's, it's reality of what's out there. And people aren't going to give up what they're being given to bring to us four hours a day.
Brian, did you reach out to your paraeducators? We have had a couple successful situations in Westford.
Yeah.
Someone works as a paraeducator and drives bus and it makes a nice combination.
I think that where, where, so our system at this moment hasn't looked to be fully conducive to that arrangement. Systems definitely work that way across the state where the para isn't assigned in that first forty-five minutes of the school day because they're coming back from transporting. Or they're not assigned for the last thirty minutes of the school day because they are assigned, because they're gonna be trans- but we don't, I mean, we've, since we haven't had that condition, we've never built para schedules to be really yet in sync with transportation. Doesn't mean we can't, but, um, and that's how like a, a CDU or, or Chittenden, um, Chittenden East would work, uh, potentially, is how do we get, if we give this person a full-time job, how does that then work well? Burlington has done the same. This challenges with it, but it certainly takes that first accommodation by the district to understand, oh, this is what we want. We, we need twenty-five people that work this type of schedule.
So that's something you could potentially look at over the next six months or.
Um, given EJ Schools, have you prioritized the one like the greatest need, like A.D. Lawton, for instance, the six, seven, eight? Would it be more, make more sense to look at transporting A.D. Lawton if you had those buses to fulfill and then work your way down instead of trying?
Make more sense to transport the youngest children first?
Well, that, or either way, but prioritize the greatest need, the greatest good.
I think, you know, when we were, uh, when we were looking at, when we knew that recruitment was slow, but we still had, um, we were still optimistic that we had time, that something could change and we were continuing to try to entice recruitment to be more successful. We had imagined that we would be coming to the board and talking about potentially a change in the radius around schools, you know, from a half mile maybe to three-quarters of a mile. Maybe we'd be talking about grade level and grade clustering. Maybe we'd be talking about more bus stops versus door-to-door. Again, you know, if, and I think we, we, we may have been there had we been more in that kind of five or six drivers, about half of what we needed, I think we could have looked at it. You know, the prioritizing would be distance to school. Though grade level becomes certainly the, the next thing, but you know, the, there's, um, there is that difference of like, we have some people that are now a, a mile and a, mile and a half, a mile and a quarter away from school. They are not walkers currently, a number of them, but, but that's where we would have our issue.
I mean, we have people who attend Hiawatha who are almost three miles away, correct?
Yes, I'm one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's one that.
It's door-to-door we were talking about, because we never got details on what the routes looked like.
No, we didn't, well, again.
If we were talking door-to-door, like, definitely, could we see what it would look like if we had bus stops? Because I don't think anyone expects door-to-door service in Essex Junction.
So we cranked the numbers and said, well, what if we changed some starting time? You know, what if we did all the things to try to accommodate? We got down to nine, with nine routes.
What if in the future we phased into Hiawatha and Summit being neighborhood-based?
Right, that, well, that's the other, that's the other complicating matter is that, you know, I have somebody that lives next door to me that's a Hiawatha student, somebody that lives five doors up is a Summit student.
Yeah.
So that starts to complicate routes as well.
History is completely mixed, which you'd need two buses.
You know, Essex Junction Prudential Committee will talk about that, you know, that has opened up an, an opportunity to balance the schools like you wouldn't have otherwise. So, you know, everything, I mean, I think you'll see at the end, there's a great part of this recommendation that says, um, with, with some more time, we can be very thoughtful on some of these subjects.
But if we only have one driver, we can't be very thoughtful. They need to come up with drivers from somewhere. I don't see this changing, no matter how many years we change how many things.
So I, and I, and I, I have one slide that, that kind of talks a little bit about what some of those options are and, and maybe how we address like where we are. But if we're in a malaise of attracting people that wanna drive bus, I mean, we know that our country as a whole has a difficult time producing the farm workers that we need here in Vermont, the dairy, the dairy workers that we need in Vermont. I mean, we just have an economy that people are not working, but they don't want that work. And we may find that bus driving at four hours a day at eighteen dollars an hour is not attracting people. Does it need to be twenty-two dollars? Does it need to be thirty dollars or do we need to look at something else?
I think if you're, um, looking at those type of wages, you're going into, um, the area of sustainability and sus- sustainable wages.
Yeah.
In twenty hours a week, I, I don't think it's sustainable for, um, the expectations of, goes along with adult work. That's twenty hours a week.
In combination with landscaping or?
What's that?
In combination with landscaping or substitute teaching or?
Well, I, I mean, it's all, it's all issues. Well, I, I mean, it's all, it's all issues.
Sometimes I've done it, but I, you know, farmers used to do it.
And I think there's also some.
We used to do postal routes too, you know, but.
And as this transportation model unrolls, I think there'll be some adjustments that are gonna come along as to whether we need all the routes or not, uh.
Yeah, and, and again, I, as I, I mentioned at the beginning here, we have multiple contractors and multiple contracts, which presents, you know, additional complexity that may be robbing the overall solution from efficiency and from optimizing, because we're, you know, still at this point, and we're, you know, we're trying to, we, we've made those decisions because we were kind of moving fast and we didn't wanna stop something, we didn't wanna fix something that wasn't broke. But as we tried to add on, we didn't get the benefit of necessarily what a whole new picture looks like.
I guess from an equity standpoint though, looking at Essex Town and Essex Junction both being theoretically served by the same company, and we can fully staff one of them, but not the other, ma- doesn't make a lot of sense to me. It makes just as much sense to put three drivers taking kids to Hiawatha because they have the longest potential distance to go for the smallest children, because it's no more unfair to me as a Summit parent to have Essex Town, Westford, and Hiawatha served than it is to have Essex Town and Westford served. Like, the more people that we can serve, I think we should, you know? Because there's gonna be some unfairness to somebody, so if we could do something for somebody, I think that.
Well, and the equation of fairness exists also as a community issue in which Essex Junction has made investments in infrastructure that Essex Town hasn't. So that there are safe routes to school, that we may not, we, we may differ in an opinion whether they're reasonable or not, but there have been infrastructure zoning, planning requirements inside the junction that don't exist within the town that do provide routes that otherwise are not, you know, are not there, like in.
There are people who could walk to Founders and.
Yep.
There are not many of them, but they do exist.
Yeah.
Well, and I think the conversation had happened, it's happened over a number of years. Um, when we, two years ago, needed to cut back our routes, or, or it seemed by ridership, we were certainly in a position to be able to cut back routes, we went from first student to Mountain Transit, the perfect storm of experiences. But to, there's no, sidewalks weren't cleaned, there's no equipment for it, no commitment from the municipality for it. So in theory, you could have snow piles come through on the streets, the streets covered, and you've got kids walking down Sand Hill Road because there's no sidewalks. So we, we quickly realized we couldn't really actually create a perimeter in the way we would think makes sense, because it would make perfect sense. It's healthier for so many other parts of the year to be able to do that. But once you're sending the boat, bus down there and you have to be planning for the parts of the year, you can't send kids in the middle of the street down Sand Hill Road. You've got the route and, and that's, that's the difference. And I know that, um, before Mark left, he reached out again to the folks in the town. I don't think they're in a position to be able to do that differently right now. I don't think that's strange.
Not, not in this, but yeah.
Almost with six hundred thousand dollars purchase of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, you're, you are, you're right inside of my brain right now and talking about where, this is all our community resources. So where we spend money is, it doesn't change where it's all coming from. So what we, what we invest in, um, could have that. And, you know, coming in and going through our entry plan, this is still, you know, this is, um, we're new to it, but I'm, I'm eager to look at this a little bit more dimensionally than we may have looked at it before.
But let's not forget that it's illegal for school districts to spend money on municipal and vice versa.
Yeah.
It isn't a well-enforced statute in Vermont, but it exists, so.
And I think, yeah.
I think being in, um, illegal, legally in a very bad place. If we were try, to try to pass on.
Our own sidewalks.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to is the differentiated start times are critical to the current busing situation in Essex Town. Um, the, the K-five kids all ride on the same bus, go to two different buildings, not on the same campus, through one of the most congested intersections. So that start time, I think, shifted by ten minutes maybe to allow for those kids being dropped at both buildings on the same bus. Then the kids who are six to twelve ride the same bus together. So there are kids actually who get picked up, like, you know, in our neighborhood at Lang Farm, go out to the middle school before they go to the high school, because that bus runs on the same loop. Um, when the high school start time changed, that was a huge, and even when the end time shifted and the, um, day, the, um, advisory moved to the middle of the day, that was a huge impact in consideration because those middle school buses get kids home, middle school, high school get kids home, then go to the schools and pick up the kids at the K-five, the two different schools. So then you've got kids waiting from the end of school day for those buses to get back. And if there's any construction here, we're toast. If the weather's bad, we're toast, and there's kids sitting in snowsuits and,
Thirty or forty minutes.
Forty minutes, so, so it is, it is such a puzzle that these pieces are so intertwined that I appreciate that, I don't appreciate that we're not able to do this. I think it's an unfortunate situation. The only thing I think it, if we were looking at it glass half-full, is we can be a little bit more strategic about how we think about the whole picture.
Why weren't we thinking about the whole picture?
Well, we didn't have time, I don't think, really, considering we were getting bids.
We have adjusted school start times in, over the summer and like two years ago.
Oh, I don't know about, I think the adjustment would probably have to be pretty dramatic for the junction, like.
I, I think we could be, I think we could be criticized for not recognizing or the board and maybe more the administration could be criticized for not recognizing how complex this would be and that it needed much more attention much sooner than it got. At the same time, we had a lot of complex things to do this year, so I think it's understandable. As Kim says, it's unfortunate. I'd like to caution us not to get, it's hard. I, I don't want us to get too deep into the weeds. I think that's Brian's job, but at the same time, we do want to answer people's questions. And people in our audience are gonna be thinking the way, um, some of you are thinking, so. Let's just try to temper her questions a little bit with what's appropriate for the board. Marla.
I'm looking at this as an opportunity to do something, I think, I think the board, we tried to do everything so fast that I'm looking at it as an opportunity to look at what kids are going to what schools. Because down off the fairgrounds in the junction, you've got the Town of Essex buses going right behind that area. So we didn't wanna talk about school reorganization or our school start and stop times, but I think as a board, we were remiss not to have talked about it before and known ourselves that it was gonna happen and challenged the administration. So I don't think it was just administration, because we, we people that live in Essex Junction know that we have kids in countryside that both go to Hiawatha and Summit Street. So how do you realistically send two buses there? How, in the junction, you know you're not gonna get them time-appropriate over from, uh, Hiawatha over to Summit Street. So it's a whole different, and I think the people in Essex Junction have moved there and they understand it's a walking district. So I think if we try to change things in the other districts, for Essex Junction right now, we're opening a larger can of worms.
I also think, Marla, a lot of what you're talking about are things that the administration needs to work on. They're also things that need a ton of communication with the public. And we frankly weren't there last year.
We didn't have time.
So, um, one of the big questions, what happens to the money? So without transportation, the funds go unexpended, unexpended funds go down to the fund balance. Fund balances are subsequently rolled forward to lower tax burdens. You know, it, it's not gonna be unusual, I think it is onus on our part and for, um, the taxpayers to understand that if we are gonna look at this, um, savings, and it will be a considerable savings, we're gonna look at it for any purposes that we discreetly talk about it. And so I do call out that I can imagine, um, us coming forward and proposing a small portion of the so- savings going towards a transportation consultant. I think that's the other thing that we've sort of had somebody in that's working five to seven hours a week that's sort of helping us out. It's been a little less aligned than my preferences would be, and, and so I'd like to really sit somebody in and, and be crunching the numbers, yep.
I'm asking this with the understanding that I have not dealt with the financial stuff. On the Prudential Committee, we didn't need to handle the budget because it was being handled up here. I'm presuming that of that six hundred thousand that, or, you know, a portion of that was taken from the tax rate for Essex Junction, correct? Because Essex Junction had to vote on the school budget separately. Is that accurate? Like a portion of this towards the budget that Essex Junction approved?
Was it district budget?
Yeah, this is the seventy-five million dollar budget, so.
That was everybody.
And everyone had to approve it.
Right.
Yeah.
So, but Essex Junction residents aren't seeing any portion of this. The six hundred thousand that was allocated for new transportation back to them. So does that tax burden that gets lowered in future years, does that then apply equally to the whole district? Because otherwise it would seem that Essex Junction is paying towards the six hundred thousand dollars this year, and we're saying no benefit, but then the tax burden gets reduced for the whole district in subsequent years. So effectively Essex Junction is paying higher taxes to then lower everyone else.
Essex Junction did not uniquely pay taxes towards that six hundred. They paid in cooperation with all. So we actually had Westford taxpayers and Essex Town taxpayers, in a cooperative merged basis, provide the resources necessary to introduce transportation in Essex Junction. If that transportation doesn't happen, it would go to the bottom line, and then cooperatively, everyone would share proportionally in the savings.
Okay.
We have to stop thinking of individual communities or.
Yeah, I just need to, right, I just want some clarification because, you know, I mean.
Well, I'm sure somebody else has the same question. I think it's, it's a good one to raise.
We spoke about hiring a transportation coordinator, and now you're speaking about hiring a transportation consultant.
We didn't hire a transportation coordinator.
Okay, but we are going towards that direction, but is the transportation consultant and the coordinator gonna be one and the same? Or two different positions and?
So, so originally, the budget contemplated the transportation coordinator in the process of trying to reduce the budget, we took that position away completely. And then we used, uh, some of her transition money to hire this transportation consultant. What Brian is saying is if we're not gonna transport in Essex Junction, maybe we can use some of the money that we won't be spending to have a consultant help us with all these things that we're talking about, how to make the routes the most efficient, what should we do to start and add times in schools, you know? And then I think there's a whole conversation, and I don't know if we're gonna be ready for it this year, but should be, be looking at changing where kids physically go to school.
Yeah.
Now, with the hiring of that consultant, if it occurs, will that be rolled into a reimbursable amount two years from today? Because with the reduction of the bus contract, this year, we're also gonna be looking at a reduction two years from now in state aid. Because we'll have less, less monies.
It won't be a reduction, it just that will be that we won't get the additional revenue because we won't have spent the money.
Right.
Well, I'm looking at this lovely slide up here, and this is a legal requirement, and quite frankly, I mean, that's where my mind's going at this point. There with, you know, I, I'm all for, you know, let's figure out how to do this better next year uh, with timing and all that stuff. So I mean, I'm, I'm, I understand that sometimes you, you stumble, you pick yourself up, and you keep going. So in this case, we stumbled and we'll just keep going. I mean, yeah, I recognize there's distances, there's, you know, with Marla's concern, believe me, I, buses sometimes pass me as I'm going places, um, or they go past A D L on their way to Essex Town, um, which I find rather ironic. But, um, so I, I guess I, I'd like to task the administration to come up with a solution for this. Okay, it sounds like there's a lot of different avenues, a lot of moving pieces, and I don't really see us as being very productive at trying to work on those hundreds of moving pieces right now. There, because we don't have all the answers, and, and the, I want the, the answer to this one, which is much later today. So, um, until, until.
But I think what Brian is telling us is that the legal opinion does not conflict with the recommendation they're making.
But I think, let me jump to next steps, because I think, you know, this is, I think we've, oh, yeah.
I just had one question about the six hundred thousand.
Yep.
Um, is it fully unexpended, or has money been expended on the summer, like, preparing routes and stuff by the company? Or if they don't provide the drivers, do we not pay them anything at all?
Yeah, we, we, the contracts are based upon, uh, cost per bus, per day, per day they run.
Yeah.
And so we have not expended, I mean, we, we may have some very minor insignificant, immaterial amounts that have been spent on, um, printing or something like that, but for the most part.
Will those drivers who are working on their C D Ls still be paid for their C D Ls even if they don't have a job?
Yeah, so he, well, they've got plenty of jobs, you know, so. It, you know, in fact, there's eleven buses that the company ordered in anticipation of having eleven routes that we're not contractually obligated to do anything about. And for them, they need to be bringing in about fifteen buses a year because the state requires buses after a certain age and after a certain mile that they are then retired. So they, so we're fortunate in that case that we're not all of a sudden sitting with eleven brand-new buses and trying to figure out how to make them planters or something, so. And the, the, and I have no interest in throwing our vendor and our contractor un- under the bus. I think they tried hard. I think it's a hard thing to do, and I think there is some stumbling, and we're all ready to brush each other off and, and move to the next spot. With the next steps, you know, we are, where this is going is that, you know, this would become with the, with the presumption, you know, we'll, we'll presume that transportation for Essex Junction students is expected to be in place on twenty-eight, twenty-nineteen, eighteen, nineteen. And we'll work with full diligence to make sure that happens. I think what we'll do now is that we'll step back from a sort of declared strategy, which was bid the new portion out, and look at what it would be to bring it all in-house. I mean, we should know what that is, so we can always do a delta reflection to, this is what it's all in-house, this is what presumably would cost, to this is what the next step down is, the next step down, the next step down. I think one of the things that we ran into is that we put an R F P out and we got one, one bid. We have a real problem in the state of Vermont, that we have this on-again, off-again, um, controlling of the marketplace. First student came in and wiped out a ton of small providers and really put some regular providers on their heels in the county. Then they decided that this wasn't working well for them, and they left. And since, you know, the marketplace has been a really difficult place to see sort of natural marketplace behavior. So we're getting no competition, we're having really tough time, and it really isn't. So I'm thinking, you know, let's look at an overall contract. Maybe we're big enough when we look at one, you know, a million, one-point-one million in transportation costs that maybe we can attract somebody to come in that we can have as a strategic partner. So we're gonna be looking at all those options, and I would say that we need to be looking at them so they're timed to inform the F Y, um, the F Y nineteen budget. So that would be more in that January time basis. So I could imagine spending a portion or a night. So I could imagine spending a portion, or a night, talking about transportation, what it looks like, what the options are, our recommendations, your questions, and have the deliberation of what gets included in the budget.
Brian, yeah.
Yep.
Just one question, you've been, you've been putting things on Front Porch Forum in the village. I think things have gone out for the alert system. Are you getting pushback from Essex Junction parents about not having transportation? Or do you think they realize yet?
I, I think what we're starting to feel is we're at that time, you know, the calendar's changed over, and we're at that time where people are wanting to know. They're not, they're not approaching us with, with an advocacy or something. It, it would, it would be really a bad secret right now that we're having a tough time recruiting drivers. So that one has been helpful. The Essex Reporter has covered it, CAEX has recovered it. And we've linked to that in both Front Porch Forum, Twitter, and some of the Facebook feeds that we have. So, and we did a mailing of, to nearly five thousand homes, an email and another mailing with the last transportation update on June twentieth, which ended, like, if you know anybody, please let us know. So we've got some, but I think people are just anxious, like, I know our school principals are anxious. Which way is it gonna go?
One, when I talked to Liz, she did want me to mention that she felt that of the people and the feedback from the transportation forums, that she thought there was a significant amount of Essex Junction residents that thought that we were maybe rushing transportation. So she did want me to mention that she thought that it might not be necessarily such a low, as it were, to the Essex Junction community if we don't necessarily engage it this year. Some people thought it was rushed. The second question comes from me. I guess I wanna know what necessarily we'd be voting on if we accept your recommendation, or if we decline it. If we decline to accept this recommendation, what do you guys do? It doesn't seem like you physically have the capability of providing it anyway. So is this kind of a situation where you're recommending it, but there's not really an alternative? Which I understand, I understand all the reasons behind it. But if this is presented as a recommendation that we're voting on yes or no, I guess I kinda wanna know what the consequences of us voting no is.
No, that's a great question. I mean, I, I think, I mean, I, I'm a former school board member, so I, I don't look, I don't like questions that come up that are sort of rhetorical, right? The board's not, not involved in rhetorical actions. If the board held its ground and said, we want transportation, we would need to go into these situations that we would say, well, we have two, possibly three, what can we get out of the town? What can we, and we would start working within things that are gonna have further consequences. We would be looking in the next twenty-eight days and changing starting times and ending times of school, which would have consequences to the kids and to the faculty and so forth. We'd be needing to make changes in Essex Town to do the same, and that's not, that's not the fear technique. It's just that, that's, we're at that point where there would need to be sort of extraordinary effort, and therefore there would be unintended consequences. Some might be good, but there would be some unintended consequences that would then fall down to, to make it happen. And of course, we, you know, we, we could also be at that point where in Westford, if the buses don't roll, school's canceled. And I don't think that we, you know, I don't think that that's where, I wouldn't recommend us to take an ultimatum like that. Like if we can't run transportation for Hiawatha next year, then Hiawatha doesn't operate. I mean, that just seems like.
We're not going from a situation where her transportation has been provided to saying that we can't provide it. Keely.
Speaking from the perspective of somebody not included in the group Liz speaks of, but somebody who, you know, there were several parents on my street who were elated about transportation, you know? We didn't move into our houses knowing that it was a walking district to an elementary school one point two miles away. We received mailings from Essex Town, which apparently thought that our street was part of Essex Town, about busing. So, what can we do to improve the situation for those people who actually either, you know, maybe they didn't replace their car, or they were relying on blind grandma to sit with the kid to wait for the bus because they knew there was going to be transportation? I think we're not getting a lot of questions because people trust us and trust the administration to come through with our plan. And I don't wanna lose that trust because we don't have explanations and we don't have a better plan that we're looking at. But I also wanna help people who actually are, poverty has been impeding their ability to school, get to school. I also wanna help people just make the situation better for everyone, like, is there ways we can encourage carpooling? Like, we have that FERPA policy where you can only give out directory information. But my school always refuses to give out directory information. So is there a reason why we don't have school directories so that parents could learn the full names of other parents living on their street and give them a call and say, let's take one minivan rather than five minivans from our fifty-yard radius?
So I, I, I think we are, we are, that's exactly what we're about to run into, is that we're gonna find that it is not, it's probably not likely a very large group, but it is gonna be a group that has very large disappointment, and that there's gonna be real hardship. And that's part of our village that I think we don't do a good job always recognizing that there are people that are really challenged, with socioeconomic challenges and work and other things like that. And so this is, I, I, I like the idea, I like where you're going, is like, well, what can we do to encourage this? Either as a stopgap measure, or maybe as a full-time replacement moving forward, because we've figured out a good solution. And I, I think that, I think, I mean, I'll go back and Beth and I will put our heads together and say, you know, what, what do our core competencies as a school really help us, lend us towards this? And then also, where can we put that call out to the community and say, hey, community, let's really help each other with this? Because maybe it's not the, you know, maybe it's a partnership that ends up figuring out how to coordinate carpooling.
But if there were a way that we could, like, partner with the parks and rec buses to help any people who actually don't have the resources to get to school, like, or something? And then for everybody else, like, here's a carpool list? Like, it just, it would be good to know that it's not just, oh, there's no buses this year.
Yeah.
See you next year, because we don't know what the plan is yet.
There are also special ed buses.
Yes, there are.
I think the junction has special ed buses.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
I don't know what the utilization is or capacity, but.
Marla. On the recommendation, you want a vote on this recommendation? The only thing I'm against is saying be postponed until two thousand eighteen, nineteen. If we come down the pike and we're stuck again next year, I want the word like maybe, potentially postponed until, or, I, I don't know what word to use, Brian, but I don't wanna lead people down the path that we're going to have the exact solution by next year if there's all these things to look at.
Yep.
Because then we're putting ourselves in the same spot, the same situation. And the other thing is, if we vote on this, I'm assuming we're going to up the crossing guards in Essex Junction?
They're there.
They're there. We didn't take them out.
We couldn't take them out because it was still gonna be a walking district for.
So we didn't, okay, because I wasn't sure where that stood.
And the town also, the village has also budgeted their full cost for the snow, sidewalk snowplowing, because again, we needed that for either pedestrian travel to bus stops, or pedestrian travels to houses, or the radius. So, then nobody went ahead and just sort of assumed that any old system was no longer necessary.
What if we change the motion to say, be postponed to such time as, I don't know the words.
Can be implemented fully.
Yeah, we have to be careful though, because people might think maybe we're gonna implement it halfway through the year. So.
But I have two suggestions.
The expansion not take place this year. I think that should be a single sentence that says, we're not into it.
Refrain from implementation in the current year.
It's something like be postponed this school year, and with the administration required to report on viable solutions during the budget development process. I, I want the board to hold the administration accountable, so I, I'm a little worried about sort of like having it just be too, like, postponed. So that's.
Can you repeat that for Kim, who's doing our minutes?
In English? So, so we're adding to the end, after, after the last sentence here on the screen, junction be postponed for the, for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. With the.
School busing EJ will be postponed.
For her.
For the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year.
Period.
Period.
Period, got it?
And we'll just start that sentence with, with the administration.
The board.
I think it's a comma.
Comma?
Comma.
I think so.
Comma, and then with? With the administration re, um, required to present viable solutions during the budget development process.
For expanding transportation next year, nothing like that.
That, that feel right?
Next school year.
I don't, I don't know that we need to restate it since the planned expansion of regular to and from school busing is already stated.
May I read that back?
Yes, please do.
The administration recommends that the planned expansion of regular to and from school busing in Essex Junction be postponed for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, comma, with the admin required to present viable solutions during the budget development process for expanding transportation.
Can we just end it during the budget development process?
Period.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if, if we wanted to, we could say in January of two thousand eighteen.
Or you could say for the future being.
Budget development process for the future, so budget development process for the future.
Well, I think you want transportation in the future. Read it again, read it from the.
The administration recommends that the planned expansion of regular to and from school busing in Essex Junction be postponed for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, with the administration required to present viable solutions during the budget development process.
In January two thousand eighteen?
Yes.
Yeah.
In January two thousand eighteen, two thousand eighteen, period.
Okay.
One sentence?
I think it's all right.
Beautiful.
All right.
I was just gonna say my only pause is that if we were to get those solutions in January, and then go about a bid process, and then open those bids, we will be right where we were last year, where we were opening bids while we were determining a budget. And I think that we could say no later than January, or, or as soon as possible. I think if we are first being presented with options in January, it will not make the budget process.
No, that's a good point.
Is it possible to put out an RFP that is more detailed in its expectations of routes, bus stops, what have you, based on our learning from this year, so that what they're bidding on is not as nebulous and require as much planning afterward? Or RFPs generally just like.
But it seems to me the first thing that needs to happen is, there needs to be some good conversations about how to do this in the most efficient way possible across the whole district. And then I think, once you've figured that out, then you can do an RFP.
Is that pretty close?
Yes.
It's exactly right.
Okay. So I think you, you're on a really good point, because this is gonna, we're gonna find ourselves right back.
I, I think if you actually put in, instead of during the fiscal year, um, development process, because development process starts, what, in a few months? Like two months? So, so if, if you put it that it's in the fiscal ye, um, nine, said ninth fiscal year nineteen, budget development process, so if we actually started talking about it in October, which be in the process, because we have to give you guidance as where you're gonna go.
Yeah, you're right.
So, yeah, that's usually been tradition. So that if it starts then, as opposed to a introductory, then in January, you'd be better have the introductory in October. So that, that's, that if we have things, some guidance or whatever that's gelled with this.
What if we said, as soon as possible and in time for the FY nineteen budget process?
I think I wanna just say a month here. I think I wanna say something like either November.
Well, if you said the FY eighteen budget development process, that's months. Right? I, I do, it's months, it's not a pro, you don't. Is, do we know by what date we would like to put out an RFP?
No.
It's like days that.
So an RFP is thirty days. We wanna be working with the budget at the end of January with the board. We wanna be putting an RFP out by extra days because of the holiday, first of December, an RFP out would time us so that we would have a fixed cost to be on the budget.
So we approved our budget this year on February twentieth, something like that.
But I mean, even if we want, like, more.
I was thinking budget sessions would be the end of January, with, you know, final things being cleaned up and warrants, you know, a warning being signed in February.
Yeah, we did, we met every week in January last year.
But I would think, um, to Brian's point, if you're presenting us with viable solutions, that isn't the result of a bid process, that's asking for our support of the direction.
Do we go this way, this way, this way, yeah.
And so you will need time to gather information enough to provide us with information on which to make a decision or a response to your recommendation, but, but then to go out to bid. So whether you think that's November or December, whatever you think works for you, Brian, if you want a date on there. We are likely to have many of these conversations, I think, on transportation.
Yeah, let's meet the budget stuff right ahead of it.
Yeah, I think that we.
Right, there.
November twenty seventeen.
Yeah.
Seventeen.
It doesn't involve the DeLorean?
Do you think that's a reasonable time?
I, I think, I think it is definitely reasonable right now, and I think as we live our course of life over the next few months, that if we're feeling a tug or a pull, that will come to you and let you know ahead of time.
Okay. Are we ready? The motion's on the table, although it's been changed a lot, so let's just start over.
I will move that we accept administration's recommendation stating the administration, well, this, nope, take that. I move that the administration. That doesn't sound right either.
Accept the administration's recommendation.
Transportation, I, I'd just say that.
I move that the, we accept the administration's recommendation regarding, um, transportation for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year.
For her schools in the village of Essex Junction, not for Essex Junction.
That's right, because Westford will be staffed.
The wording of the motion is that, um.
There, that works.
Okay. I make a motion to accept the administration's recommendation that the planned expansion of regular to and from school busing in Essex.
that the planned expansion of regular to and from school busing in Essex Junction be postponed for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year with the administration required to present viable solutions by November two thousand seventeen.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So that's five to one, and.
I didn't actually say anything, can I abstain? Is it necessary to?
If you're abstaining, it's because you've pretty much got a conflict of interest or something, um.
Choose not to vote.
She might, she can't go home, no.
You can choose to abstain though.
Huh?
I, I think you can choose to abstain because whether you have a conflict or not.
It hit, it, well, it's, it's a, it's a touchy thing. Um, there aren't really rules about abstention for school board members. Um, in the legislature, if you're sitting in your seat, you have to vote. And you can only not vote if you have rule seventy-five, which is a conflict of interest, um. But I don't think there's anything in our.
And I guess I say aye, it certainly feels like a conflict of interest, but.
Yeah. So the vote is five to one, Kim, thank you, Kim.
So five to one, and in the motion and the minutes, it has to have Patrick's name, right?
This is the first time that I've actually not voted in favor in the entire time I've been on this in the provincial committee, I'm very excited for myself. I, in fairness, I also ran on the campaign of expanding transportation to Essex Junction, so I don't think I can be good conscience.
Despite the fact that it's not.
I understand the recommendation as it is, but I.
All right, let's move on to the second meeting of the, um, mandatory policy E one, which is Title One, Part A, parent involvement. We approved it at first reading, uh, the last meeting, I don't believe anything has changed.
Not, nothing has changed, um, but in, in, in reading it, um, there is a footnote number five that doesn't have a note in the body. Um, of, because I think it's in, in the alteration, the, um, whatever it was footnoting is, is, has been altered.
So we should remove that footnote?
We should probably remove that, um, I, I did ask Amy Cole if, because it was part of her changes.
Okay.
But my computer was still updating, and so I didn't have access to her response if she gave me one. I apologize. We can vote on this, can't we, at our next meeting, when we have the final?
Yeah, would you like to double check, Diane, and we'll postpone action?
I, I'd like to double check it because it, it talks about, um, LEAs.
Okay.
And I, I, and that was my question, is, is it, is this important, is this an important footnote or not? Um, if it's not, then it's, you know, I'd have no problem. But if it is important, if it, if it's contextually important for anyone to know that, I would feel remiss if we eliminated it.
So, um, does anyone object to postponing it to the next meeting, and Diane will double check?
I also have one question that I can't remember how it was resolved in our committee meeting and our discussion with Amy, which is that this policy refers to Title One, Part A, and we have another policy which we approved in June, which refers to Title One. Do we wish to make those titles both refer to Title One or both refer to Title One, Part A?
Aren't they different?
Because I believe Amy said that they were both referring to the same thing.
They're, they're referring just to, I guess, something similar. Um, her, her position was essentially that either the state or the VSB, VSB was going to be changing this um, policy, and the new, the newest edit has not come up, but we need, we
But, but they have.
need this essential policy for functionality. So, it's one of these cases where it's like, oops, we need to have this, and, and so.
I was just wondering if we wanted consistency in the names of our policies or.
Will you ask her whether they should both say the same thing, or whether there is a difference?
So, it, it, I apologize.
Thank you. So you've got two things to check on, right?
Right.
Great, thanks. Okay, let's move on to communications, Patrick?
Yes, um, so I, we were due to have a scheduled meeting last week, but both Liz's schedule and myself and Ben, it's been hard to sort of get anything official, so we touched base just very briefly. Um, there are four things we wanted to touch on for communications. Um, first, uh, Liz had brought up the concept, um, based on, uh, one of the messages that came up on the Essex VT Facebook page of, um, I guess the equity that exists within individual schools that have to do with uh, providing school supplies, someone came up, someone posted they wanted to be able to provide backpacks and school supplies, and we found out that some schools did it and some schools don't. So she was thinking of creating, as she phrased it, a parking lot concept where, as we hear about these inconsistencies throughout the district, that we basically just have a centralized document that Ben will oversee, so that we can sort of go down the list as they come up and, you know, hopefully address them um, through various board meetings, she thought that was just something that he could oversee, um. The Front Porch Forum, I think we all got that email, because I think it went out to everybody. Um, we have, until this point, been able to post on Front Porch Forum um, various individual board members, um, when we should not have been, uh, simply because it theoretically costs money. Um, we have to pay a subscription if we want the ability to send blasts across Front Porch Forum to all of the affected districts. Uh, Liz has that ability right now, and Diane, I believe that you do as well. Um, and Front Porch Forum, that was basically them touching base saying, hey, it's an oversight, you guys haven't been paying for this, so we need to remove your access unless you start paying for it.
So Ben has that ability?
Ben has that access, so we thought from a communication standpoint, Ben was enough.
I think it, and I think Ben's enough, I think we can do everything through Ben.
Yeah, so we recommend that we obviously not pay an extra two thousand dollars because the board really doesn't have any need to be able to post when Ben has that ability right now to do it.
Yes, and if, if there needs to be a message from the board, Ben can post and say, this is a message from Martha.
Yeah, so it should be coming from you anyway, we thought, right?
Or we had discussed, like, using each of us to post in our neighborhood, like, which, since I never responded to my request to get like
We post some.
I think it's.
school board member under my name, I'm really not excited to give them more money.
By and large, they just wanted to charge us eighteen hundred dollars to be able to do that, and we don't think that we need to do that, so.
Right.
Well, I don't think it's to get like school board member under your name, it's to be able to post all the forums in the district.
Oh, no, not that, right, but be able to post on forums, yes, yes. Um, the takeaways, um, that we've been doing, and I've been updating after I took those over from Keely. Um, Ben suggested that we obviously continue to do them, but instead of using the blog spot, he wants to be able to place them on the official EWSD website now that we are official. Um, so just going forward, after you make the approvals, when I send them to you, I'll send them to Ben, and then he'll put them up onto the, uh, page from now on, so there's a little bit more officiality to it.
Well, and it's good if people can find everything in my.
Yes.
Um, is it something that he would also post to Front Porch Forum and?
He mentioned the ability to be able to get these takeaways out, because I think the concern is right now that some select people definitely know about them, um, the takeaways, but Ben himself didn't know about them, like, he wasn't aware that after Keely stopped doing them, that I had taken over, he just assumed that, that was it. So if Ben wasn't aware that the takeaways were still going on, then I think that probably community-wide that it may, may just be lost in translation, so by him being able to put them up on the EWSD site, he could also then blast them out on social media as well, to make sure.
I guess that would be my suggestion, because having people have to come to us to look for them, isn't, it's a Facebook or whatever other avenues they have to use, so that would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. Right, and it would.
He wants to make them more prominent, so that's what he's going to do.
I think that's a great idea.
No, I, I think that's a good idea, because if somebody sees something there they're interested in, then they can go read the minutes, or they can watch the meeting.
They can link it out and watch the meeting, and maybe start to look for future agendas, and it just creates a habit of, um, having information come to them.
Good, done.
Can we, communications, address the issue that the Essex reporter seems to ignore that we exist um, by not morning our meetings in the calendar, they have a spot in the top of their calendar that, that has all the municipal or, and or school meetings. Um, I, I didn't find that one, I, I found it frustrating, uh, at this point in time that we are the school district? It's no longer one of school districts, we are the school district, so if the Essex reporter could be informed, um, requested, whatever, whatever the terminology is, is this, put it down so that people know that we're meeting, maybe it might change the audience profile. Um, I'm not holding my breath, but, you know, but on the other hand, a lot of people don't have electronic means, and that newspaper may be the only place that they know, um, that it exists, um.
So if you could just ask Ben to look into what it would take to get them to do that, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, the last thing I had was just a very quick Voices for Education update, um, we're up to about a hundred participants taking place in the Forwards for Essex survey, um, continuing to meet throughout the summer, um, Wednesdays at EJR P, um, there's a few other events that are going on. Um, and I believe that, Beth, you're coming to the twenty-first meeting for VFE.
Uh, yeah.
Um, and then obviously the goal, once we get the number of participants done through this project, is that later in the fall, we're gonna sort of deep dive into what the forwards mean to the community and how we can use that as a vision going forward.
At six PM on Wednesdays?
Um, for.
Voices?
Uh, it's not that regular during the summer.
So the meetings are typically, I think, Monday, actually, the next one is the one that you referenced, I would say they've been five thirty, late seven thirty.
Yeah.
I. Very.
The twenty-first, sorry.
And there's usually a food, um, yeah.
So, um, when you get the agenda from the board retreat, you will see that we're gonna spend some time with, um, Sue and talking about the vision and, um, getting some of her input into it, but also talking about how they're gonna roll out their work on the vision, so. Questions for Patrick, Keely?
This is not a question for Patrick, but when it came out of what he was just talking about, for, um, warnings in general, like when we have committee meetings, is that still Lorna doing that, or is that Ben now, okay?
Yes. Yep, that's all Lorna. Okay.
I, I just wanted to clarify the parking spot for equity issues, um, because I had also had an opportunity for a conversation with Liz, I think it was um, not necessarily that Ben, or at least in the conversation I had with her, that Ben would have to be in charge of that, but rather that we would um, begin to get towards an equity inventory, that we kind of recognized our previous budget process and the work that had happened heretofore was to do no harm and not create further inequity, but rather that as a board now, probably more for Beth and these guys to keep us aware of where you're recognizing there to be inequities, so that we have a heads up when either we get to budget time or whatever other part of your planning is beginning to address those issues.
Do we leave that on retreat?
Does that, does that, because I'm just thinking it wasn't necessarily, at least in the conversation she and I had, it wasn't about Ben being in charge of it.
I don't know, you know, we touched base over a brief period of time, so I got an idea for the concept, really, um, but not necessarily the right, the, the
Yeah, not necessarily the Ben.
the nitty gritty of it, so I, I would hesitate to say one way or another what Liz's intention on that was, it was just, but it was worth reporting.
The mechanic, yeah.
I, I had actually discussed parking lot with Liz, just because as we encounter more people who aren't from the same home districts as we were, like, we're gonna hear about things that we've never heard of, and like, how do we tell the administration, how do we inform the budget process?
Yeah, I would like to leave it to her to really, probably next meeting, if she wants to, to clarify the specifics of her idea, because I don't wanna step on her toes when.
Well, I actually think it might be a good idea to do just what Keely did, when those issues come up, send them to me. I can send them along to Beth, Beth knows, we have had some discussions about the fact that it's an issue, and, um, it's something that we are gonna have to be thinking about and talking about how to address long term, and, um, yeah. So, it's on, it's on Beth's mind.
Yes, it is.
But I think for now, as those things come up, if you just send them to me, um, then I'll get them to Beth. Okay, um, local board and statewide updates, um, Kim, do you have anything?
Um, I, I do know, um, in the statewide hat, the there are yet to be guidelines around the healthcare legislation.
Thirteen.
And that, um, and I know Nicole Mace is at a NSBA conference right now, but scheduled to meet, um, soon, uh, upon her return, um, to see how that's progressing and to provide input, technical support and assistance as to what the actual impact of the law is, and, and where the information might reside that they would need to know how to bill us essentially, or short us, or whatever the impact is gonna be for each of our, just, all of the districts across the state with respect to revenue, so that there is no additional information forthcoming at this point on that matter.
AOE is in the midst of a data collection right now.
I, I think Kim is looking at me perplexed, I think she has a hard time hearing you, Kim.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Because you, you talk down, so.
I'm, because I'm down, and, and, so I was just gonna say, and, sorry, this is the, okay, sorry. I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry. The live mic, he's going to karaoke. Um, so, in the VSB A hat, I know that there's not been, um, additional information to districts about the cost of the healthcare legislation in our impact on our own budgets, that, um, Nicole Mace is scheduled to be meeting with folks in the coming week or so to provide some input to that process, I think, and see where they stand. Um, the resolutions committee of that VSB A board is gathering, there have been no resolutions submitted from any of the local boards. Um, there are some recommendations that work that's happened at the VSB A around cost containment become a resolution to guide the work in the coming year, that's somewhat typical of the process that if we've done some study and done some work, that we are going to ask for, um, membership support to charge, um, Nicole and others in that office in their work for the future year, so. And, and there, um, there'll be regional meetings in the fall that will surround that to- those topics of the resolutions, so people are fully informed, and then there will be, um, the conference will have the business meeting that will address those and continue the conversation.
So I think you've all gotten notice about the regional meeting, um, I would encourage you to try to attend, um. I can look it up, you could see me after if you don't remember when it is, I'm sure if you go to the VSB A website, you can find it, and you can register.
Wasn't it the same night as our regular?
No, it, it got switched, that was.
It got moved again?
September eleventh.
I think that's right.
Nine eleven stuck in my head.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Do we know what school?
I think it's at Menuske this year.
Menuske, nine eleven, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So I have a couple things, um, I got an email from Randy Vans, who is the assessor for the town and the village, um, and I talked to him today, and the, he studied that property valuation. And the study that Property Evaluation and Review does to determine the CLA was the subject of our conversation. And they actually do a single study that encompasses all of the town and the village, but then they have split it apart in the past because there were two different school districts. So he is talking to them about whether they could just keep it a single study and have a single CLA for the town and the village, which would mean the town and village would have the same tax rate. It's going to be, we may be able to bring Westford into this eventually. The key to that would be if we could all do the appraisal at the same time and then move forward from there. But that's not on the table at this point. So what he was asking me was if the, if PVNR wanted a letter of support from this board, would we be interested? So I said I'd bring it up tonight. I'll come back to you if he does think we need to write a letter. So do you have any questions? Okay. Mises, oh, Keely?
What do you think would be the implication of the town and village merging in something that Westford is not merging at the same time? Would that?
I don't, I frankly don't think that's problematic. I think if, if we can get that much together, I think that would be a good step forward. At this point, it would actually be costly to Westford because our CLA is higher, if that makes sense, and lowers your tax rate. So I, you know, as soon as you explain that to people in Westford, they're not going to care if you have, if they have a different rate than you do. The second thing is I have had communication from Dylan Jam Batista, who is one of our state reps from Essex Junction. He is asking if we want to, if he, if we could have a conversation. So I'm going to see if I can set it up a time to talk to him. But then he thinks it would be good to have a time for all the reps to come and sit with the board, and I agree with that. He was particularly talking about the fact that he thought it would be good for people to understand the effect of the healthcare legislation on our district. Well, we're not going to know that for a while. So I think once we do, then in our agenda planning, we can try to figure out a time for them to come. Unless we think we want a whole separate meeting, but I, I don't find that's worked very well. I think having them attend one of our meetings is probably the way to go. So that's what I have. You have anything from state level?
I do not.
Okay. All right, then the agenda for the 15th. We know we're going to have the policy that we postponed. Do either of you know anything specific that needs to be? We could have professional appointments.
Warrants?
Warrants.
Oh my goodness, we're going to have official warrants. Our board hasn't had that yet.
Things will start changing. We are, yeah, okay. All right, so messages to the community. Obviously, the motion on transportation and maybe even being able to provide a link to the slides that Brian presented, I think would be really good. Yeah, I think.
So I understand the mechanism because I just, I just emailed like three times to Ben just while we were just talking. So I'm kind of catching him up and going to be working through him and the communication mechanism. That's where this goes to him as well, right? So yeah, we've got that center point of Ben, and he's going to be a key point in getting things on the web, out on Twitter, out into our various things. And we'll sit down this week with Colin as well from Essex Reporter. And maybe CAX, they may have an interest to do a follow-up.
On, on your presentation, I have a question for Kim who does our minutes. She likes to have things like that added. And I don't believe Lorna has been able to do a link up to this point. Ben always was able to do links for the PC when he did our minutes. So I didn't know if you could communicate with Ben and see if Lorna is now able. Because instead of all that showing in our next minutes, it would be great if she could just say, see this link. So now that we've got Brian here, maybe we can get that coordinated.
Well, Beth might be able to get it done too.
We're only one district too, so that makes it.
That might make it easier.
So that might be the issue.
Exactly. Keely?
So in terms of communicating about transportation, when my neighbor asks me tomorrow what we say about transportation at the meeting, are we going to have something to direct them to tomorrow?
Yeah, I'm, so Ben and I are, are getting together first thing in the morning. I mean, I would say by, you know, afternoon, we'll probably get up there making sure that we've got something that's been I's, I's dotted, T's crossed. We've also, our, our, the key communication is that we've talked to all the principals in Essex Junction. They're all holding their summer communication until the 7th of August. So that will go out to every school age, family and child. And so we'll have the web on top of that. We'll start to roll this out then in social media. And then at the end of the bookmark will be our, the Essex Reporter that will come out the 10th, and then we'll run it through that way. So we've tried to, we didn't, nothing's been in motion until this evening was done. And now we're pretty much, we've got a good sense of how we want to do it on both a hard and soft basis.
So I can answer those questions.
Yeah, and feel free to direct them, you know, any kind of press or question you're not feeling comfortable with, they can be directed to either Beth or I.
Right, but you can, of course, talk about the action we took. But if it feels more comfortable to wait till there's an official message, that's fine.
No, it's the sort of thing as a parent I would post on Facebook about, but I don't want to make a post on Facebook. As a board member, I want to share the official communication, so.
Or point to people to where it is shared. Andre?
Is there anything that can be shared as to when the schedules will be made available? Two weeks from now, a week from now?
You mean like for high school transportation?
High school, K through eighth, there's any changes?
This, this week. Yeah, Marcy, Marcy can be in a little bit different, Westford School can be in a little bit different schedule because we're, we're changing less. So we were just in touch today. She's reaching out to CCR, working through that. Her interest is to control the initial communication to parents and families and then have follow-up because they're going to ask people to share their inclination, and they'll share that directly with CCR. And then we're working on a common way to get this on our website so that all bus schedules for Essex, for the Essex area and for the Westford area at least have a common look. And so that just was activity today to say, like, how do we get? Because if you've, you know, seen bus schedules before, they're, they're kind of strange the way they're laid out. So we're trying to kind of put our heads together to see how we can make it work.
So a fair response within, within the next two weeks then?
Yeah, certainly.
And that will be on the web?
We'll, we'll do the web, but there'll be, there'll be school age communication to school, school parents. We'll get direct communication from the school.
Okay, thank you.
Community members interested can refer to the web.
Okay.
We'll hopefully glass that.
All right, back to the takeaways.
I've got down transportation. Is the other one going to be activities Beth and Brian have done for the month of July?
Can we link the presentation?
Sure.
Yep. I don't know who that, there really is a third one for this meeting. Maybe Patrick, you want to include something though about the work that Voices is doing?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
What, who is doing?
Voices, the Forward Project. So you could put in a bit about that because you talked to us about that tonight. Okay, so who, in a second, I'll entertain a motion that we move into executive session. Before we do that, I just want to point out that our next meeting is on the 15th here. And the retreat is scheduled on the 28th from 1:00 to 7:00. Do we have a space yet?
We don't have, we have the police station, and then we're also looking over here. We just have not heard back from.
Right, so to be determined for the time.
Made that connection, yeah.
Some, somewhere hopefully close to here. Keely?
Um, just something about the message to the community. I know it was in the newspaper, but the fact that negotiations are currently at impasse might be something useful to mention since, I mean, we haven't discussed anything about negotiations in open session, but if anyone doesn't read the paper, they could know that.
That's a good hint, yeah.
Like all the other districts.
Negotiations are at impasse and we are waiting for information from the state about how the healthcare legislation will be implemented. Does that work?
That sounds accurate.
All right, any questions or comments before I entertain a motion? Right, I'll entertain a motion that we move into executive session. Can I do the two things at once? I guess I can. For her to talk about contract negotiations and a communication from our lawyer regarding transportation.
So made.
And what time?
Any, let's do, any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I hear the opposing, aye. Okay, we are in executive session.